Welcome, everyone.
Any additions?
Yes, sir.
On number seven, I'd like to work with you. Do anything about that when you read the second slide before I read it.
Second.
It's, uh, I don't understand.
You want to defer that until after our mid-year budget meeting? Okay.
Number seven. Unfinished, yes.
That's the second reading of the Land Budget Orders?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of deferring this till the mid-year budget meeting? Sing aye.
Aye.
Any notes? Two notes?
One no.
Just one no, okay. Any other additions?
I'd like to either have the items that have the mayor's name behind them deleted or someone else second it because we were told blatantly last meeting that we couldn't email anything in to the city clerk and apparently that's how these got on the agenda.
Excuse me?
Other than the Grand Avenue slide ordinance.
Uh, I guess so. Yes, the issue of the alcohol beverage tax, you see, is number two under new business, is really important and I wasn't allowed to put my name sponsored. That's why it's okay.
Only if, what I meant is only if it was a council and the mayor.
Mr. DeVito?
I didn't understand that was what the attorney said. I'm free to email the city clerk anything I want. There's no prohibition against that.
I have a question. I'd like to know if the mayor is going to second items for certain council people, if he's going to do it for everybody every time. And if not, that's unilateral and not really appropriate, in my opinion.
We can't answer for the mayor since he's not there.
I defer this to the city attorney, but in the minutes that we've yet to approve for tonight, it said that whenever I move to suspend the rules and allow emails to the city clerk for additions to the next agenda, we were told no.
Mr. DeVito?
I remember that we couldn't coordinate as council people, but we're free to email the city clerk anything. You're free to email them and if two of us happen to email the same thing, then it gets on the agenda.
Just one, Mr. Weaver, do you want to, do you like to jump in on this?
Well, I mean, the council can defer what they want to defer, but the mayor doesn't need a second. If the mayor's name appears, the mayor can add anything he wants to your agenda any time he wants, by the city code. And so if his name follows something, just because of council, his name follows it also, doesn't, is it required? It's on the agenda if he put it on the agenda. Unless you remove it at this point.
Mr. Raphael?
Well, I'm kind of new and have done a lot of new reading. It seems that we can communicate with Ann and with Mr. Weaver anytime we want about anything. And we can also revise and set up a new way to establish our agendas also.
All right. Mr. Weaver, I don't think we really received a second on your motion, but I think what Mr. Weaver's saying is the mayor's name's on here, then it can be on here unless we want to defer it.
Number six under new business is, should be deleted because it's not allowed per Robert's Rules of Order. His motion to delete it from the agenda.
Second.
And that being because we voted on that originally at the beginning? Mr. DeVito?
I feel we revised our procedures through the course of the year. The fact that we voted to adopt Robert's Rules of Order at the beginning of the year doesn't mean we can vote to change it in any way we want. We have that authority to do that.
I'm going to have to go to our commentary, Mr. Weaver.
Well, at this point, it's not a decision that has to be made of whether it can be or can't be because he's been made as a motion and you have a second. You can take a vote and the majority of the table will rule.
On whether changing?
On whether, not on whether the Monday night, but whether to leave it on the agenda. And then if it's on the agenda, it can be decided. You can always amend Robert's Rules at that point if you so choose.
So there is a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor of eliminating this from the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have my hand up for comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's kind of too late.
Well, you know, I've been criticized for not having things on the agenda and not, you know, participating and, you know, we have agendas that are 10, 15 items long and you can see who's sponsored all of these and I have the temerity to come up with a couple of items on the agenda and get shot down. You won't even discuss it. You won't even bring it to the table for discussion. It's just, let's just kill it before it even starts. I find that rather troubling.
Any other deletions and additions to the agenda changes? I have a couple. I'd like to go ahead and defer item number eight, resolution for engineering fees until mid-year budget, mainly because this item really isn't an emergency. We've got this grant for a year and we don't need to discuss this and we've got a lot of other budget items. So as far as the sidewalk engineering fees, I'd like to just hold off on that until mid-year budget. If that's okay.
Second.
We're going to take a vote on that.
Yeah. All those in favor, sing aye. Any other discussion? All those in favor, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would defer that to mid-year. Are we ready to talk about the alcohol beverage tax?
Are we going to be discussing any of them that do have only the mayor's name behind them or are we going to postpone this?
I think we, I mean, we can talk about them. I mean, we have several issues here. We might as well, there's no reason for us not to talk about them. The only item, yeah, I think there's nothing here that we can't discuss. We may not make a decision for discussing.
Will we approve the agendas amended?
Second.
Oh, I do, yeah. Before we go on to that, I would like to see if it's okay with the council to go ahead and move the engineers regarding the Grand Avenue landslide issue to the first order of business because we do have an engineer here from out of town. And that would be, which item is that? Item number five.
New business?
Is that for?
Big pardon?
Is that a, have everything as far as unfinished?
Yeah, yeah. After, right under, be the first item under, before unfinished business. After our commissions and public comments. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor, sing aye.
Aye.
All right. I'm sorry, now I'll take your motion to approve.
Motion to approve is amended.
Second. All in favor, sing aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of July 7.
That's second.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, additions? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes that submitted, sing aye. Any opposed? All right. Commissions reports. I think we have anybody complaining. I think Beverly said she's going to be gone. Oh, Nikki. Are you here on the plane?
I'm not really. If you have questions, I can answer.
Unless there's a report.
Yeah.
Okay. CXPC, Parks. Bruce here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Which is hold off on Parks and HDC. And then we'll come up to the cemetery. You guys are up.
Good evening, everybody. Mary Ann Ponnell, Six Mart Circle here, Eureka Springs. For those of you that don't know, especially Mr. Parker, I know he's new, I'm the Secretary Treasurer for the Cemetery Commission. Last month, and I promise you all, I am not going to show up at every meeting, hopefully this is going to be my last for a while, but to give you the commission report, I promised you all a, well, our second quarter financials were due and so I have a copy for our new finance director to give her, plus I have a copy for each one of you. And if you would help me pass these out, here you go. I'm just going to briefly explain it because I know that you all are smart enough to decipher these numbers. These are, this is not rocket science. In a nutshell, the cemetery looks really good on paper. We really do. We are currently at a net worth of $114,996.97. However, you have to remember, three of those are in CDs. We have two $45,000 CDs and one $10,195.12 CD. These currently do generate an average interest of approximately $26 and some odd cents every month, which is not a whole lot of revenue that we can put into our operating, as I explained to you all last meeting. The bottom line is, with this financial statement that you're looking at, the city, once again, does pay Tom's salary. That is all that we get out of the budget, the city budget, to help the cemetery. Tom's salary, and this includes everything, which is the deal of the century, includes his workers' comp and includes everything. It's $25,394 and some odd change per year. We get that every year. The finance director writes out to the Cemetery Commission every January a check, which we deposit into our account over at Cornerstone. Now, out of that $25,000, we have currently sitting in our bank account, as you can see on the last page of this financial statement, we have $12,745.79 of actual money we can use. We have to pay Tom's remaining salary for the year, which is going to amount to $12,592. So we're already $153 short to pay Tom for the remaining of the year. But we do have $4,453 in our savings account, which I'm just kind of hoarding that like a baby to my chest right now. I don't know if an emergency is going to come up. If Mr. Archie Ryan, who's our cemetery section, if he doesn't sell any plots, this is all that we've got to end up for the rest of the year. So I'm very, very, very careful with this savings amount of money. However, I'm almost committed at this point that we're going to have to transfer funds just to get the bills paid for July and August. With that said, I just wanted you to be aware, there is no money, no money for anything. We have a lady by the name of Gala who took time out from her day to day and, oh, incidentally, she also sent every alderman an email with pictures attached. She didn't get it out to you till probably late this afternoon, so it's probably sitting in your email inbox now. But she sent me pictures. There are some downed trees at the cemetery. One is literally uprooting an old headstone. And I'm going to just, I don't know if you can see these or not. I don't know if the camera can pick it up.
Those are all the same tree.
But this is all the same tree and it's just, this is the headstone. Hold it up like this?
Yeah, just hold it still or, you know, like count to 10. That one's not so great.
Well, anyway, what's important is what you all hear me say. This is a really good picture. It's actually uprooting the headstone. I don't know if everybody can see that or not. It's really dire. I'm going to lay these on the table. You all have these pictures in your email inboxes, your city email inboxes. Guys, this is your cemetery. It's not my cemetery. It's not, it's not the commission cemetery. This is your cemetery and it's a beautiful piece of property. It's 40-plus acres. Tom is out there with a push mower and his weed whacker trying to keep it upkept somewhat and it's a horrible mess and my heart breaks. It just breaks when I go out there and I see how it looks. We have no money for signage and we do need some new signs. We would like to see some money for a map that we could, it's a cast iron map. Yes, it runs around approximately $4,000, but it's permanently mounted. It's a lifetime warranty on it. I found a company that would do it and it would actually give visitors a map to be able to find their loved ones. It depends on you, if, this is up to you. How well do you want to see your historic cemetery taken care of? We're doing the best we can with the little that we have. And with that, I'm going to give the floor to our chairman, Ken Fugit. Of course, you all know Tom. He's been out there just whacking things around with a machete, pretty much, just doing the best he can. Any encouragement you can give this gentleman, please give him because he certainly deserves our gratitude and appreciation. Thanks for listening.
Like Ann said, we have some money in the savings, but please understand, this is only the middle of the year. Pardon me. Every year we have to have three or four trees removed. Right now, I was out there today, there's a 30 or 40-foot pine tree that's going to have to come out. That costs $1,500 to $2,500 each tree. We have to pay the market rate. Every year we're removing two, three, four trees. The winter's yet to come, ice storms, we're going to have downed trees and stuff. One thing that I can say, being on the commission for quite a few years, is one of our baby pet projects is we've been trying for years to get enough money to buy hardwood trees like oaks and whatever to plant out there to replace the trees that are falling. That's a big problem we're having. Since I've been on the commission, we've probably lost 30 trees. And you've all been out there and you know, we have to keep replanting to keep it up and going. So that savings that's in there, please don't get complacent and say, well, we'll deduct and include that. That's where that money is being used for. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Tom and I also want to take this opportunity to thank you and to thank all the citizens of Florida that have called with support and admiration and stuff. Thank you very much. Any questions from the chair?
Good evening. I'm Paul Reynolds, as you know. The last meeting, I was asked to get some quotes on different mowers and their prices. And I've checked with several dealerships in the area, which if you wish to pass this around, this is some quotes and notes that I took on, from some of the local dealerships and phone numbers there. If you want to have a telephone number, contact them also. Basically, we're looking at anywhere from $4,500 up to $8,000 was the range I was looking at. Some of these rebuilt mowers aren't even in that range, they're $9,000 and up. I ran across at Berryville Equipment, just down the road. This mower right here is just a no-frills, basic mower. I've seen them advertised on TV. They're called bad boy mowers. That is, that price is good nationwide, no matter where you go, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. $49.99. The next page, two pages over, is the home edition of that. Smaller motor, smaller deck, smaller, not quite as heavy equipment, but those are the, that's the price range we're looking at, between $3,000 and $5,000 for a brand-new mower, not a rebuilt, a brand-new mower. It's a no-frills mower, gasoline-powered, air-cooled. You don't have all the extra belts for the radiator. You're not even worried about blowing head gaskets all the time and overheating. Most of the mowing companies out there that are going with new mowers are buying gas-powered mowers. This mower right here, out of 300 mowers that I did contacts with, out of 300 mowers that have been sold in local dealerships, four have come back. Seven of the tensioner springs for the deck have broken. Three of the leveling motors for the raise and lower the deck have gone out. And then the other four were problems with the motors that came from the manufacturer. That's out of 300. Those were the only problems we've had. Every, every company and every owner that I've talked to have had, that has one of these, just raves about it. It's a basic, heavy-duty mower. It doesn't have all the bells and whistles and all the safety switches and everything. It's got your basic safety switches and the relays are right under the seat exposed. I can practically do all the work myself on a mower like that. Anything else, we're going into a diesel mower or something larger, which is what we're trying to get away from. We don't need the extra big mower, like with the grasshopper we've had with the diesel mower. It's been nothing but a problem since we've had it. And it's completely down now. It's non-salvageable, from what I understand. It's starting to rot, the mower's blown, it's seized up and the head gasket's blown. Yes, this comes with a complete, I believe it's a three-year warranty and service contract, free delivery. They will drive to our facility and do the service work on it because we are 6.8 miles away. The actual manufacturer is only four hours away. One gentleman I spoke to over at Straitsline Garden, he was over there picking up parts and I saw two of these on his trailer. He told me he traded in his Kubota and bought two of those. He's got one as a standby and he's running the other one. He says he probably could have gotten away with just one because he's had no problems with it in a six-month period. And that's all he does, is mow constant, day in and day out, six days a week. This is just my opinion, but I think I don't see how we could go wrong with something like that. Anything smaller that we go with, we're getting into a homeowner edition of something and we're asking it to mow 40 acres. I borrowed the riding mower from Parks this last week to help get caught up. It's a basic home edition riding mower. It just about won't handle and it will not pull itself up a hill. And it's a larger horsepower than the bad boy there. This is the research I've been able to come up with so far.
How often do you have to change blades and how much are new blades in your blade?
New set blades that'll come with that is an extra $45 plus. We can also get an extra set of belts, but those are available at NAPA or just about any hardware store. The type of blades that are on that are very similar to the ones we used on the grasshopper, which we used what they call a gator blade, mulching and mowing blade, which we will just about swap out from the mower we have to that one. And we have 12 sets of blades from the other mower. Like I said, basic maintenance and everything on that is just simplistic. And please, any input that anyone else would have, just.
What was the best warranty you had on the rebuilds?
None.
None?
None. The best warranty we had was on the parts that they had replaced. Other than that, they would not guarantee.
About 90 days?
No.
Yes?
Do you have any information on how much it would cost, any kind of estimate on how much it would cost to replace the hydrostatic gear on that? That's usually the most expensive piece to replace.
Well, we have.
Not that it has to be replaced.
No, and from the research I've found out so far, the factory has, the service work and the, under the warranty, anything like that goes out will be immediately replaced by the manufacturer through the dealership.
Any other questions? Is the three-year service contract, is that extra cost?
Yeah, for the three-year it is, but we're only talking another $100 or something.
And it comes with a one-year service, full service?
Yes. In fact, I believe there's a set of stats on this particular mower.
Is that from the straight?
This is from Berryville Equipment. But any dealership that carries the bad boy mowers, you will get the same price, same warranty, same service contract, no matter where you go in the nation.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I have, the mayor, I guess, was given a application for a planning commission. The back form's not copied. There's only one, is there a copy going on there? There's one copy. Yeah, we make it back copies. Denny Lee Flattery? Flare, what?
Flattery.
Flattery, okay. Anyway, she put in application for pivot rock, I mean, for planning commission. So we'll get your copy to the back. She's got quite a bit of extensive experience in planning in Florida, in Boynton Beach, Florida, community relations, planning and zoning board, some other issues. Yes, sir.
That, this is a nomination from the mayor?
Yes. Yes. Public comment sheets, Mickey's. I think it's next.
I just want to give some clarification.
Tell it to Schneider.
Oh, hi, Mickey Schneider. Thought everybody knew me. Might get some clarification on the deer hunt. The way it's worded that the people voted on, this is an issue allowing a one-time bow-and-arrow deer hunt. Not a one day, but a one time. Down under section two, it says that said bow-and-arrow hunt would be according to regulations promulgated and times set by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission and so on and so forth. They are in charge. This was something I personally had insisted on because we are talking city limits, people, pets, visitors. One day ain't going to cut it, guys, unless Arkansas Game and Fish say one day. If they say one day, that's one thing. I honestly don't think it's worth their time to come here for one day. It'll probably be a series of days or a week. Yes, October's way too early. Don't want to be shooting our people. Good grief. Anyway, also to remind you that any of these hunters are the elite of the elite and they have passed all international laws. It's not just anybody who wants to pick up a bow and go hunting. So, as long as Arkansas Game and Fish is running it, we should not have any problems whatsoever. The other thing I wanted to make note of, and in fact, you just proved it tonight. We have special engineer tonight. He got moved up to the top of the line. I don't think discrimination is nice, and that's what we're doing to our own people from other commissions and other boards. Beverly sat here for five hours last meeting and then had everything canceled. If someone's presenting, please act accordingly and give them the courtesy of letting them present and leave. No one should have to be waiting at the table but you guys. When it comes to the vacation of alleys and streets, the biggest thing you need to remember and to keep in mind at all times, these alleys and streets, over the centuries, it feels like sometimes, have been built on, used, developed, because the street has no reason, the city has no reason or use for this alleyway or the street. When the city was first put together, there was always a possibility. At this point, it's pretty much moot. Angelo was in last year. Couldn't sell his property until the city gave up an alleyway that ran directly across the middle of his yard, and he had a good-sized lot. There's no way the city was ever going to put in an alley. So, when you consider that the city is not going to be able to do anything with this property, they obviously have them for a hundred years. They're not going to need to do it now, then there's no reason to be getting appraisals or anything else. We did the two-hundred-dollar rule, per spot, per whatever. It seems to be working fine, but there's no need for anyone to be going to an expense on appraisals. City can't use it. It's been built on. So, there's no reason for that. Those are just a couple of things that I wanted to bring up, call your attention and have you think about. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the, on a personal, I don't know, public comment sheet. Next item will be Grand Avenue, landslide ordinance and presentation. We did have the walkthrough, site visit. That's it, please, sir. Yes, sir.
For the discussion.
Okay, second?
Check it.
On favor?
Aye.
What we have is an ordinance that came up before us to, was noted in these, the engineers are here, and our public works director to talk about what's going on with our Grand Avenue. The slide started out on Spring Street. We had a set fee the last time that covered the Spring Street slide, and we actually ended up spending that money and being able to get a lot more work going on down to Grand Avenue. For those of us who are down there at Grand Avenue, we saw what was going on and the reason for additional work to go there. So, I guess right now, or whether we want to have these boys, some of y'all weren't down there, and I guess kind of, if you can give us kind of a brief overview of why we need to look at this and what's going on and the importance of it.
Okay, yeah, we'll give an overview and I'll get Daniel from McClellan's here, McClellan Engineering. As I said, everyone's aware of the slide. We had to save spring. We had an emergency ordinance to amount of money from a street reserves to do that. We were able to, for approximately ninety thousand, we were able to do that, put the cover in, some of the water line. At that point, slide kept going, lots of moisture, lots of groundwater. It was taking the trees right on down to the power grid on Grand, so we still had an emergency situation, so there was no choice. We got SWEPCO in. They saw it even worse than we did. They removed all the trees. We started pulling back some of the soil to keep it, you know, try to stop the slide. At that point, kind of, it's connected. If we lose everything, we lose the key on top, then we could lose Spring Street again on that end. So, started in and, as I said, we've got to the limit where we've got one lane open and, you know, trying to, at this point, what do we do? You know, funding, you know, that's the issue we've got to look at. You know, it's been approved, I guess, last meeting, talking sidewalk money for the grant that we received. So, you know, we, of course, we don't want to cut any corners on this, so that's kind of the decision we're bringing to the council, let to you guys, and I'll turn it over to the engineers and they can kind of explain where we are. A lot of moisture's still coming up in the middle of this and, you know, we're still sliding, so. But, you know, we think, you know, we're fine. A large rain, we don't know what will happen, but, you know, the emergencies, you know, were to a point where we could go off and the funding, so we, I think we've done well with our funds so far, but we want to continue to fix this at the best possible amount, you know, funding. So, this is Daniel Barnes from McClellan Engineering.
Hi, everyone. I've got Dee Percival here as well that's assisting us with the project. And I believe most of you know Dee, and most of you know the situation out there on Grand Avenue and Spring Street, where Spring Street has been stabilized, and that's really not what we're concentrating here on today. It's Grand Avenue. The slope's just uphill from Grand Avenue. Just to try to give you an idea of what's going on out there, we've got a spring that somehow or another has changed direction over time. I say over time, just here recently, caused the initial slide there on Spring Street, and it's still light. I mean, Dee was out on site here. It's been probably a month, month and a half ago, and actually visualized and saw a couple of gallons a minute worth of spring water coming down or coming out of one of the holes they dug about ten, twelve feet deep. So, we know that the water is continually moving down the slope. We have been on-site this afternoon, looked at it again, and the slope continues to move. The issue we're running into, as everyone knows, it's dry here. It's been a while since we've had a significant rainfall. But what the soil is actually doing is just acting as a wick. It's pulling all of that water from the spring and saturating your entire soils. And as it does that, and the water that it wicks up or pulls up, it gets heavier. So, the heavier it gets, it allows the water just to slide, or the soil, the saturated soils, to slide along a plane, which it appears to be that plane, or some, a rock shelf that protrudes back within the, I guess, slide area, just on the southern side of Grand Avenue, and causing the soil to slide down. Without some type of corrective actions, it's going to continue to slide. We've witnessed this over the past month. It's moving. It's, although it's moving slowly, but it's moving, and it's going to continue to do so until we can stabilize it. Now, we think there are two items, two ways to get this stabilized. One is about halfway between Spring and Grand. It's to install a Kiway trench with a French drain all the way across the cleared area, if you will. If that's installed, it allows us to capture that water that's saturating the soil and get it off the hill, get it under the road, into the creek on the other side of Grand Avenue. The second thing is, we need to stabilize the bottom of the slope. They're right at Grand Avenue. And to do that, we'll need to excavate some additional material, put some large rock back in, something that has a larger shear strength that can withstand those forces and actually hold that dirt back. Now, when you add that rock to it, that rocks pours, you know. When you put it together, the water can run through it real easily. We'll wrap that in filter fabric, so any water that maybe is not intercepted in the trench, uphill trench, will go through the water in another French drain that has already been installed and out and prevent future, future water, or future slides. Now, the reason we think this is important, I'd say a few reasons. One, on the engineering side of things, we think you need to have an engineer take a look at it to assist possibly getting some monies back from FEMA. I mean, it's not guaranteed, but at least it gives you the best possible, most economical fix. What I mean by that is, I'll go to point number two. We can look at and determine exactly how much rock needs to be put back to withstand those forces. That way, you don't put too much in there and spend more money than you have to. And then, third, we want to make sure we don't want to put too small of an amount in there that will not hold it back in the future and possibly allow a future slide. So, that hopefully is clear to everyone. I don't know if Dee has anything to add or...
I think you kind of summed it up, Daniel. Essentially, when we were out there on site, there are cracks that are four, three, four inches wide now, and it's engaged a mass that's probably a hundred feet by seventy-five feet. It's a big white arch goes up the hill. This wasn't there when the contractor was asked to pull off the site a couple of weeks ago. We knew that it was going to continue because we haven't stopped the intrusion of water, the spring water. So, it's constantly staying saturated. It doesn't have any shear strength. There's nothing to hold that soil together. So, at a minimum, I would say, you know, we ought to have that French drain up there, the intermediate French drain, right below the spring garden. My preference would be to have a Kiway trench, just because that helps anchor that soil mass up above it. The city has gone back in, public works has gone back in, and there was an eight-inch main there that failed initially during the initial slide. That main has been mostly reinstalled, but I noted while we're up there that that material is still cracking around that area. In other words, it's still saturated where we put the main back in there. I understand the need to do that because we had to get water, we're having water pressure issues. But what it does point out is that we need to take the water off that slope with that intermediate filter drain and possibly a Kiway, simply because, well, we'll be, we'll be back in there repairing that eight-inch main because it's going to move. We've seen it move now. I think that's it. I wouldn't like to say that, I've worked very closely with Lowell Johnson, with Ozark Southern Stone, who's the contractor on this. They've done an incredible job. He's gone way over the top. He's virtually, you know, I mean, the stone that he's providing is huge riprap and it's placed correctly. They know what they're doing. They've installed a French drain at the toe on Grand, so will collect all the water that comes down through that hillside. Virtually, they've donated that rock to do the job, and they stayed on the job, seven days a week, until I think they got the Spring Street stabilized, and then they peeled that back a little bit. I just wanted to send a shout-out then because they've done a great job.
Water's been tested and determined that is a spring?
Haven't physically tested it. It's-
Well, I mean, I know that an occasional spring in my neighborhood is not a spring.
Yeah, it's groundwater, so don't worry. At first, we thought it was city water, and we probably shut the valves off and have this decorum on. Of course, that's not completely, you know, it can, it can dry out quickly, but it's groundwater. We're almost certain.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, we're looking at passing another ordinance to waive competitive bidding. I'm wondering if it would be to our advantage at all to get some bids, just to see what options there are. We might get some new ideas if we put out some bids. We might find, we might find that this is truly the best that we can do. But unless we put out bids, then we don't really know. We're just taking somebody's word for it. So, that's my main concern.
Is this seventy-seven thousand dollars is the price we're talking about?
Yes, that's what we're proposing. That would include the engineering, and to finish the project, that's the maximum that it could go to. That's what we're estimating. Of course, that's-
It's not a bad price.
Of course, you know, that's dependent on the engineering. If one of those plans come out, hopefully it's, it's listed, and still, that's a good price for what we're looking for.
It seems like a good price.
And then, but that's the thing, we'll, you know, you have to agree, like you said, is this an emergency or, you know, if you get that back quickly open or if it does slide, so that's what we're looking at at this point. But that's what we're proposing. We think would probably be the cheapest way, and on our end, it's just trying to, you know, keep it within budget where we can handle it this year. And we'll get, you know, a certain amount of fee of money back, you know, estimating, you know, minimum of maybe eighty-seven thousand. And then, at the bottom, if we can't get it, we'll peel that at some point, but, you know, you know, it may take from what we're doing, some projects we've got even this year, and we're looking, we have a timeframe on the sidewalks where we can push out, and in the worst-case scenario, we're just taking and putting that in for next year. So, I mean, that is a possibility on the grant, but, so.
My concern is the investment we already have in this project, a day, an hour, could make all the difference in the world, and we could lose everything that we've already got invested in this. So, you know, as much as we would like the luxury of time to make this decision, the earth is not going to wait on us. So, you know, advice of engineers who understand this project a lot better than I do, that things are still in flux and still in movement, and there's other things that need to be done. I feel comfortable waiting the bidding process and going ahead with the project.
Can I add to that? And this is really in regards to your comment, this balance, the, by going out, you know, normally for any project, you would go out and you would get bids for the contract, the actual construction. But this, at this point in time, because it is an emergency, well, it's continuing to move. And if we were to stop now, it would take a minimum of forty-five days before we, forty-five to sixty days before we could get, select another contractor, go through the whole bidding process. And in that period of time, then we can see that that soil mass is probably going to move more. We can see it moving right now. So, I agree with your, with your, with your thoughts on that, that, you know, we normally want to get tier-three or four bids. I think right now, though, the cost of mobilizing, demobilizing is extremely high. So, the big equipment is still there. And so, if you get another contractor, the other contractor has no idea what's going on. This contractor is pretty much up to speed, and he knows exactly where the engineering is directing him and has been really quite helpful. So, I think, having said all that-
Uh, so, I think, having said all that, uh, my opinion is that probably ought to proceed if the council so wishes.